Okay, good evening. I am calling this meeting into order at six oh seven P M on this Wednesday, November thirteenth. As we always do, if you don't mind, please stand as we do our pledge allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now a moment of silence as we consider those who have gone before us. Thank you. Hi Deb. Okay, roll call please.
Dusty Power. Dusty Wari. Dusty Alfred.
Yep.
Dusty Sunny. Dusty Hanselman.
Here.
Dusty New.
Here.
Hey Rob Allen.
I am present. Hello there. Alright, first off, as advertised, we have a public hearing to open. So I need a motion to open a public hearing regarding proposed local law number five.
Okay.
Thank you Deb.
Second.
Second. Thank you Bobby. Okay, as we discussed last time, we have a proposed local law. I'm gonna put the resolution up on the screen here. This is a local law that will add a stop sign in a particular intersection in the village of Huesic Falls and as anything with a local law, we have to draft it, introduce it formally in a meeting, set a public hearing for it. Once a public hearing is completed, then it's the board's option to move forward with the law or not. Uh, so this is the resolution offering it, but the actual local law is there. It's pretty simple. It will be adding stop signs at the intersection of Abbott and Wilder on the south side. So, would anyone like to speak directly to this proposed local law as part of the public hearing process for any local? Okay, hearing none. We typically, strangely enough, Huesic Falls wise, just kind of leave it open for a while. So at the end of, I think, the mayor updates, I'll give it one more shot if anyone wants to speak to it. And then I will close public hearing. Trustees, anything else you want to mention about this? What's that? Good. Okay. Alright, um, announcements and correspondences. Trustees, we have a call from a resident who is ill and not able to move very well and they've requested a bench be added and put outside his apartment at twenty-five Main Street. This is, I think, the same building that Maggie's BB salon is located at.
Yeah, it's in next to it or.
Yeah, where is the broken link?
Yes, yes, of course, not national grade. Uh, Judy, um, it's front of the building, they're looking for a bench to be set up, right?
Yes, it's just a couple doors down from me, bringing that same big building.
Kenny, do we have?
Well, it's probably on there.
What's that?
It's probably on there.
Um, I don't think so, but I I do have the name, just for the sake of, they may want it private, I'm trying to keep an eye there. Um, Kenny, do we have any extra benches?
Do you have the tractor benches?
Nope, I think that's kind of the bench they're looking for.
Sure.
Um, how much does a a bench cost typically? The kind, this kind of this, the non-bench standard kind that we've been getting?
Over a thousand.
Per bench?
Yeah.
Yeah, those were all, those were all sponsored, that's why we weren't able to do it.
The tractor ones or the non-tractor ones? No, I'm talking about the non-tractor ones, like, this, like, the ones we have along the Greenway.
Yeah.
I have three tractor benches in the whole lot, but that's probably because we have the perfect one, we have three ones.
The ones with the concrete sides and the wood that goes across it?
They have the question.
Those are a thousand?
Um, yeah, by the time it's all settled, yeah.
Uh, okay, so.
Wait, oh, you have two tractor benches?
What's that?
You have two tractor benches?
We have three tractor benches left in the whole lot. I don't have any of the other ones. Um, where I would switch it from, would have to, I'd have to take one out of the park.
Yeah, they're.
Just the Greenway purchase, the ones that are on the Greenway. So we can't, we can't touch those.
Yeah, this guy needs to see the concrete.
So, sounds like, uh, not at this point, maybe we'll decide to use some funds on, that's a thousand dollars for a bench, that's a lot of funds.
Yeah, alright, we'll look, keep an eye out.
I saw them on Lisa Vegan's Facebook page. What is the name of her business next to the senior center there?
The Treasure Hunt.
Treasure Hunt, thank you. With the iron, metal ends and the wooden plank, the old one.
That would work, that would work. Um.
That was two days ago on her Facebook page.
See, she.
We'll check up on that, thank you. Remind me to check up on that. Uh, that's definitely worth, worth looking into, so.
Don't bother looking, just give her a call and then go on.
Yeah. Alright, so, we have a direction, we're looking for a less than thousand dollars used one. Okay. Uh, great. Uh, second, we received a request from Hannah Huesic, uh, assessor Tiffany McMahon, who I see is in fact, welcome Tiffany. Uh, requesting to update, uh, the village to update their language about the senior exemptions via local law. Do you want to speak to that and to the board about that?
So yeah, in two thousand and two, there was a local law submitted to the county that said, it was pretty vague. So we were missing what percentage was allow it, allowed for each resident or under the income. So there's only four bullets on this. So it doesn't tell me like what percentage. So the town and county does fifty percent income under forty thousand. This just says income under fifteen, that's it. So it doesn't say what percentage I should use. It's from two thousand and two, so fifteen is pretty low, but depending on how high you go, opens the floodways to how many people will be eligible for it. So that will shift the tax burden on the village residents. Um, so I did send over what other municipalities have been doing with some ideas of what you guys could update your voltage to. If you guys want to look that over, I'd just like to get it passed before the deadline of March first. If anybody applying, we can approve them appropriately.
That's a deadline Tiffany, March first?
March first is the deadline to submit applications, yes.
So if we had something ready to introduce in December and hope to pass in January, that would be fine?
Yes, yep.
Okay, alright. So I know that, um, we have what you sent us and that the sort of the standard boilerplate local laws as a starting point. Elena, I know you have a NISC unit one as well. So local law folks, can we work on this for the December meeting to be introduced?
I did also print out, if you guys want the copy of it, what the state has.
Yes.
The state does, I printed it, we can have this file. And I printed the towns two kind of local laws on it. Um, you guys can refer to that or you can refer to it if you would like it. Uh, but the state does fifty thousand or less, fifty percent. The town doesn't do that, the county doesn't do that. Not a lot of towns are fully at fifty percent. We're slowly going up to, or still getting up to the fifty thousand.
Okay.
Income rates, I mean, this is copy the way it is.
What does the town do right now?
Forty thousand, fifty percent.
Okay. Alright.
So, I can hand this over.
Yeah, can you, yeah, that'd be great. Trustees, any questions for Tiffany?
This is for the star program, sorry, didn't you know?
No, it's for the senior citizens. The star program is a different program.
Okay, sorry.
Nope, yep, you're fine. So the senior citizens also get an additional exemption if they apply for it. If their income is, for the town and county, under forty thousand. For the village, if your income's under fifteen thousand.
I was just assuming we'd have to wait till after January until that gets passed if it was for the senior.
Your income is under fifteen thousand, you apply for it.
That's so low. Oh my gosh.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you Tiffany, um, we'll, we'll get on this.
Okay.
Feel free to check in with us early December. Prod, make sure we have it on the agenda, please.
No problem.
Alright, uh, and no other question for Tiffany? Thanks Tiffany.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, back to this. Alright, I have a whole slew of updates with a bunch of various things I kind of want to throw out there. I'm using this mayor update as kind of an update on some of the projects that we have going on. Uh, first off, regarding the new water source, which is being installed over, uh, at that spot in between the school and, um, basically the village. Um, I got to speak, uh, last week, um, and get a little bit of an update on things. Uh, the basic important points are they are looking to finish and demobilize during the week of November eighteenth. Um, they'll be likely doing a substantial completion walkthrough around the same time. Uh, by the way, if anybody wants to go to that, we're certainly welcome to do that. I was invited myself, it's probably during school day. Um, they're expecting that, uh, there's some sampling and some tests they have to run and get all of those results over to the state. That review typically takes six to eight weeks. If you add in the holiday season, it may be a little bit longer. Um, these are standard sampling tasks, pressure tests, various, um, normal things that are sort of part of the, uh, normal approach to doing all this. Um, but the end takeaway is they are looking at the possibility of being, having our new water source online uh, by either late January or more likely February of twenty twenty-five. Once that is done, um, the next steps will be taking our existing two wells, which as part of this plan and being done by the companies, um, will be in a sense retired and covered up. We'll be maintaining one of our current wells, which is well seven, yep. Um, as part of what the state is required for the remedy to be. So we'll be on the new water source, um, that, you know, is piped down and under the river and over to the water plant. And our current well seven will remain the backup and our current well threes and well sixes will be retired, uh, from existence. Any questions on that?
Will the new water source go through the same treatment process that the existing wells go through?
Yes, yes. And the whole line, um, Jim, Josh, Kirk, Emma, Ron, the whole line has been pressure tested and it's all good.
Yes.
Yeah. Alright, so there's, there's a lot of more nuance and little things to go, but that's kind of what we're looking at is hopefully February of twenty twenty-five, the new water source is online, which will be fantastic.
Is the source from the river?
Uh, no, it's a well, I mean, it's a well underground, so it's, yeah, yeah. Not directly the river, way, way, way lower, from the aquifer. Uh, alright, uh, second thing, New York Forward updates. Um, New York Forward's LPC group, who has been overseeing projects, has completed their work. Uh, if by chance you go online to huesicfallsnyf.com and you click projects, you can actually see what the proposed slate of projects is. Um, it was, uh, really great to work with that whole group of people. I know Doug was a part of that as well, uh, from the village. Um, the concluding point is that there is a slate of projects that adds up to seven and a half million or so. Total projected costs. Um, that is going to be put together and packaged in what's called a strategic investment plan. That is going to go off to the state agencies and the governor's office. Uh, and they will ha- have to make the decisions about which projects are going to get funding and which ones aren't. Um, the LPC was hung up on the fact that all of the projects fit with all of our goals and desires for what we want to see happening in the village. Um, so the state likely in probably March of twenty twenty-five, I think it's kind of the general idea, will be the ones to announce that out of this slate of seven and a half million dollars of projects, and these are combined public projects, private projects, nonprofits, uh, they will be awarding the four point five million dollars. And that's when we'll actually start to see things really, really move. If you go to this site, you can, uh, I think, click and see any of these projects and you can also see which ones didn't make it. Uh, from the village's point of view, we offered, uh, six projects. Uh, two of them, which was the possibility of, um, expanding the municipal building. That one was rejected, uh, pretty early. And the second one of, uh, pursuing the Murphy Building as a possible new building, municipal building. Uh, that one, we actually asked to be left off the list, uh, because we never got contact back from the county, uh, to fully explore that option. It doesn't mean that option is off the table as a long-term solution, if that's the way that we as a board, uh, want to go and the county would be open to that. But in terms of pursuing it with New York Forward funding, uh, that's out, out of there. Uh, we do have, um, the pedestrian infrastructure improvement project, which was a lot of sidewalks, lighting, um, the ramp going up, uh, out of Wood Park up to, um, the.
Woodhouse.
Wood Park, senior housing, Wood Park.
The senior housing, uh, Woodbridge, what, uh, I was, yeah, Wood Park. Um, we also had the Greenway one. We had a smaller version of the Monument Park one, uh, which won't be called Monument Park. It's kind of a placeholder. That's the former Oakman Stewie property, which our goal is to have that parking provide a sidewalk and a bridge, uh, to the Greenway, so it becomes another Greenway access and future use for public space. And we have another side project trying to develop, uh, project ideas there. Uh, what am I forgetting Doug? What's the other village?
Local small projects.
Oh, and the, the, the important one, you, why don't you talk to, to the local small projects?
Part of the request is for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards small projects to find sense, less than five thousand dollars or less. Whatever amount the state approves for that fund will then come to the village and there'll be a separate RFP process for folks to apply for that money and it's a local decision.
Yeah.
I need one of them.
Yeah. And I know a few applications got there. You tracked down another one today, so that, that's good. Um, so again, this is on, um, the Huesic Falls NYF dot com website, which you can also get a link to, uh, off the main website. Uh, okay, uh, number three, uh, lead service line inventory. Um, and we have a letter that's going to be coming out to residents in a couple days. I'm, uh, invited and they were so excited to come. Jim and Josh, our water operator and assistant operator, to speak to what this is. Um, the, the basic version is, this is something that has come from up on high within, I think it's federal EPA, uh, that we have to do a, an inventory of any lead service lines and either say it's this type of material or it's this type of material or it's unknown at the time. Jim, Josh, you want to explain a little bit more to the board and folks here?
Yeah, if, if you wanted to go over what you went through at the last meeting, and I can probably piggyback that, I know you mentioned it last month.
Uh, very briefly, um, basically, in fact, let me throw this. This is a picture of the letter that's going to be going out in the mail in the next day or two. Um, but we wanted to kind of give context because whenever we hear about the possibility of lead, obviously, we're going to be sensitive to what's going on. Um, there are three, in a sense, possibilities about what could be, uh, the answer. One is that there is no lead, because we definitively know that, because we dug up all the roads to prove that, which we don't really have the money to do. Uh, number two is the possibility of having a galvanized line, which I think is a gal, is, is steel line with galvanized zinc to prevent corroding. But we've learned over time that the zinc kind of gets into the water and is an issue. So if that is something that we would find, we would take out, but we have not found that. The reality is we have an inventory of about twelve hundred and some locations where we know it's copper or it's unknown. And the eventual goal of this entire project is for us to know exactly, definitively, if there's copper lines going into residents', uh, buildings or something else. So this inventory had to be done back in mid-October, which, uh, you guys got done and off to the state. Uh, the next step is this letter, which we're going to get out by Friday, which basically explains, we don't, we, we don't definitively know what the status is, but if you have specific questions about your property or if you want our water operator or assistant operator to come to your property and check out what it is and they can specifically say it. That's our long-term goal, because our long-term goal is to be able to update this entire spreadsheet to, to say exactly what we have seen there and what we know is there. Josh, anything you want to add?
Yes, so, um, basically, what this letter is going to do is going to contact us, um, you know, more or less, we're going to want to verify if you have copper coming into your home. That's, you know, A plus. Um, I know probably less than, you know, maybe two to five percent is going to have galvanized. I mean, personally, in a decade, I've never seen a full lead service coming into somebody's home.
Yeah.
This is only customer side, so we can update this based on records from, you know, water main installments. To say, hey, new water main went in, new copper service ran to the shut-off in the homeowner's property. Um, from there, the only, uh, true verification effort would be to inspect visually in the basement or, you know, excavate the property. Um, easiest way to do that is give us a call. You know, we'll come in, we'll fill this inventory out and, you know, over time, the EPA is probably going to want to elaborate as to, you know, what, you know, the, the next steps will be, but this is the first one and, you know, operations appreciated.
And we, we have, uh, a regular requirement to do lead testing every three years. It's twenty samples or more. Um, we've never had a violation for the lead and copper rule, so in, in, in science, when we hear lead, we're concerned, but we've, you know, never had a violation of that in the, the time we've been doing tests in quite some time. Trustees, do you have any questions on this?
The only thing that I wanted to highlight when speaking with Josh and Jim, um, is that we don't have any confirmed you have lead because EPA is just having to send us blanket letter. It's either no, you don't have lead, or you might have, so there isn't.
Or in a sense, we don't know.
Or we're not sure, yeah.
Historically, we have seen almost no lead or no lead lines.
Because I know if you get this, if I got this letter, I'd be like, oh my gosh, you know, they, there's a possibility, but.
What happens if they do have lead?
Then, it's, this is a final line and Josh can correct me. Then, if it happens, this is where the funding comes in, we have to offer funding. And the funding will take care of all these repairs and change outs and stuff. But we're not sure exactly how this funding works. We know Troy got six million dollars, well, fucking much of that. They're doing it right now, I'm bringing it out. To help them cut down costs, but I don't know if Troy has to pay this back or if that's this funding that is a grant and they gave it to you, you take care of this.
This is, this is going to be a long-term thing that we're going to have to have on our radar.
Time limit, we're not sure until you get these letters out and you can come back to the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a bunch of literature on help.ny.gov if anybody wants to talk about this is, this has been the worst, you know, for the last four or five years.
Yeah.
Just kind of come with permission.
Yeah.
Jim, just to be clear, there, and Josh, you guys have never found an actual lead service line coming into a house, but there is quite a few lead goosenecks, which is the connection that allows you to make a bendy twisty turn towards the house.
Recently, we just found one, Josh, he saw it, it was sinister, uh, sinister.
Was Elm Street galvanized?
It was a galvanized line going back to the house. But the house was very, very good. Somebody bought the house and the whole line got re-dunked, so that's gone. But do we know how many more that could be in the second ward, third ward, fourth ward? I have no idea and to investigate, and they all have to be investigated. If there's nobody that not to surely what's in the line.
This is, uh, this is really concerning the customer side of the service line rather than the municipal side.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, it, it is all one and the same. This is the first step. They want to verify, you know, what comes in here, what comes in your house, um, and steps will be taken from there.
Sure.
So, again, always, I'm sorry, you had a question?
Is everyone getting the letter, no matter what, whether they've been checked or not, like, we obviously know some people are.
Everyone's getting the letter, yes.
Just so everybody gets it rather than, you know, neighbors talk and.
And, um.
Right.
So we decided, yes.
It'd be more than that, you know, so.
Because, um, you know, do you know how, like, what, what that kind of town line is according to?
Yeah, okay.
Like, you're saying I'm new, right? And they're fifteen years, is it like somebody?
Your service line is all copper.
No, 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 what I'm saying for other people in the area, like, if they are twenty-five years ago or diagnosed enough to tell that they're new.
It'd be the majority of second ward, it'd be parts of fourth ward, Parsons, Abbott.
Um, generally the older areas of the village. Um, first ward's pretty much been all done, all Clayville.
Um, they're all, they're all new water mains, so we can, you know, based on records, we can verify that from the main to the homeowner's shut-off in the property is all been replaced with, um, with copper. So, you know, the majority of what you're going to see, where you're probably going to see galvanized, um, you know, God forbid, lead would be, I would say, second ward, um, you know.
I'm so sorry. What part of the, because I read it the main five years ago, I was galvanized.
Yeah.
Beyond the main to.
Yeah, so on that picture right there, yep, if you can zoom in.
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, I moved.
So on the left there, it's going to say the water main.
This, yeah.
And it'll say connection or service connection.
The one right next to the.
Yep, so go over to where it says curb box. Right, at that curb box point, anything to the left would be considered public side. Anything to the right would be considered customer side, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, whatever water mains get replaced, just, just for instance here, everything from the left to that curb box point is going to be all lead-free brass and take out. From that curb box into the home is the first step of this L S L I. They want a verification as to what comes in from that curb box into your home.
Thank you.
And, and it's going to be important for us to have those records updated and if people have questions, um, call village office, call the water departments and we can help identify that. Um, this is one of the, the, this is the spreadsheet, uh, that they have been working on, uh, just, just for context of it. There's no way you can see everything, but you got to understand there's like over a thousand rows of properties and it lists out things like, you know, we know there's copper here or it's unknown. Uh, so we have all this information and we're looking to update it, so if people do have questions, they can, they can call and ask and fight them.
I have a question. So when I was installing meters years ago, on that, we did a survey paper and we had to write on there when we took the meter numbers, whether it was a galvanized or copper main coming into the house. And can we get back to them records to see and just pinpoint all the galvanized mains would bring us closer to lead goosenecks?
Where would you?
I didn't hear all that, but not necessarily, um, I'm, I'm just going to use an example, um, any, any more or less, you know, service connection that we dig up, I'm just going to use Main Street for example. Ninety-five percent of them are going to have that gooseneck adapter and they're all going to be copper. So it'll be a flare adapter to that lead gooseneck fitting, so.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because you guys referring to galvanized, but I've seen them on copper and galvanized mains coming in. So whether there's been a water main replaced, that's when I would say, yeah, they did thumb the water main to the curb box. Anything related to that, but I've seen both going to lead and copper, so you can't just say it was galvanized before.
I feel like we have.
I'm not following what you're saying.
So when you were stating a lot of them were just on the galvanized mains for the lead goosenecks? When you've done them before, we've seen them on copper and.
Are you talking about the mains or the service lines?
Copper and galvanized mains coming in.
Are you talking about the main or the service line?
The connector.
The connector over here?
Most of them are lead goosenecks in the building. There's not full lead mains coming in.
This little, this connection right here.
That's the gooseneck.
Most of the ones that I've dug up.
Yeah, I, like I said, I'm, I, I guess I'm just not following. So the only, the only ones that I put full copper for were based on our records.
Yeah.
For water main replacement.
Yep.
You know, ju- just to be safe, every homeowner is given this letter. If we, you know, wanted, you know, send out nine hundred and fifty instead of twelve hundred and ninety.
No, you have to.
You know, we could have, we're trying to be completely transparent.
Josh, this, this inventory is where, is, is identifying this stuff right here? Is it, is it identifying this at this point or not yet?
So that spreadsheet is going to have main, main size, main date of installation, service connection, potential lead gooseneck, um, service line replacement, it's, it's, you know, anything with an unknown, they're going to get this letter, whether it's customer or public side.
Okay.
Right now, what the EPA wants is they want to know what is coming in through your foundation.
Right, okay. And in terms of funding, there's a lot of different questions about how the funding works, which we need to follow up on. Um, especially if it, you know, gives us the ability to do some more actual infrastructure work to replace things if they come, if it comes up. Alright, trustees, any other questions? Alright, thank you Jim, Josh, appreciate it. Uh, next thing, website development. Um, as we talked about, we, we, um, brought in someone to start working on a design for the new website. I have, uh, I sent, uh, Jeremy from Divide by Nine a pretty massive, um, sort of structure and organization uh, on how I was hoping the website would look and to talk through kind of, allow him to kind of do the designs and the look of it. Um, I'm blown away by what he's come up with. This is a spreadsheet he sent to me.
That's a nice logo.
Uh, that's not the logo. So the first thing he did was he looked to update the logo, which is a pretty good and standard thing to do. The coloring on this projector is not quite right. It is green, that looks, looks more blackish, but, um, um, he, he is suggesting that we kind of update things to make them, he, this font that he grabbed is very similar to the wood signs that we have entering the village. It's kind of both a modern flair, but it also is traditional and it matches up to our signs, yes.
I'll get the.
Oh, okay. Um, so this is, uh, one of the versions that he's kind of proposing. We didn't exactly, uh, give him additional money for logo designs. This is kind of a, initially, do you?
But I will say something then.
Yeah, that's fine, go for it, please.
So, so, uh, Huesic Rising is working on a logo for. Okay, so so uh, Husak Rising is working on a logo for the two hundredth, which is in twenty twenty seven. Um, to, but we were hoping to do one that, because it'll get a lot of play out there during that anniversary, so we were thinking, we were trying to design it so that it would
Sure. Sure.
look like a, our logo, design a logo and then add, work the two hundredth anniversary into it, but then when that's over, we can just pull that part out and have a logo, so maybe I get connected.
Sure. This is, yeah, and it's, the way that he's gonna set this up structurally is if we change the logo, it's basically gonna be like, well here, let me show you down here. Uh, it's like three files, so if we go in and we stick with kind of the same size and we just change out the files, it automatically becomes live when the page is loaded.
Okay.
So he gave us a horizontal look, a vertical look and an initial look, which I think is fantastic. He gave us a sample of how it would look on kind of the generic uh, website, that's just, it's not a very good picture and it's just pixelated, I need to get him the original uh, photo. Um, going more towards structure and website world, wireframes, um, I'm gonna kind of zoom in, but this is kind of what we, what I asked for and and sort of talked about the design. Logo, a couple dropdowns that are specific to categorizing pages. A really important one called I want to, so that you can click it and see a dropdown, I wanna pay a bill, I wanna find out about leave service, I wanna know if there's a burning ban, whatever there is, we can populate that list and as people have more questions, we can add to it. Uh, if people wanna make a payment, uh, such as for our water sewer or solid waste, they have, they have it there. Uh, this is WordPress based, so if there's any logins for our um, clerk and whoever else has access, you do it through there. Quick links, news sites, notices, all of these automatically populate, so if Olivia puts up a news post, dates it, categorizes it, whatever, it'll go onto all the right portions of the websites. And he sent uh, a couple different options for how individual pages would look after the fact, but I'm just gonna skip right down to, oh, this is like secondary pages, where once you go past the main page and you click on, say, I wanna know about the transfer station. It could look like this with the title of the page, the content, some other things on the side, some things on the bottom, or it could look this way, he didn't go into that yet, cause he wanted to kind of hear from us. Um, but I wanna go right down to the look. This is kind of a sample of what he is thinking the homepage could look like. Um, this picture is a generic picture, but we obviously have the choice to get lots of pictures and I know we have lots of lovely photographers who do amazing work.
That's a, a set picture or that's a, is that slide, a long thing?
This is a set picture, but we can, we can update it for Husak Falls specific ones, which I'd love to do. Um, most recent news articles will be here, it'll be clickable, we can add thumbnail pictures and when you click it, they go to actual photos. Any notices such as special meetings or certain items that come up will automatically populate there with the most recent on top. You have some options for quick links over here, a water page, uh, which is an important part of our site will be there, I wanna scroll down um, as well. One of the things we talked about is uh, urgent notices and there's categories of different urgent notices that we can put up there, um, and I'm gonna scroll down to that. Uh, a general notice, a road construction notice, a safety notice, a water notice, an air quality notice and a weather notice. These are again something that whoever has access to it can go in, put it in as a post, specify the type of notice, boom, it shows up on the page. When you create the post, uh, it's just a generic uh, Latin stuff, it's like a standard thing to do, just to throw in sample text. Um, we can program it when we create the post as to when the date starts and when it stops, so as an example, like a couple hours ago, I think, uh, the governor created a burn ban and extended it through like November thirtieth, I feel like that just happened. We could go online and uh, um, put, put the post up, boom, and it will show up on our homepage right off the bat and it will stay up there for as long as it's set. Um, so this is kind of what he's thinking for overall site. Uh, if you scroll down past the top, uh, there's a possibility for adding upcoming events, which I think would be fantastic, it could be board meetings, it could be community events, it could be, it's up to us on how to create it and of course, the footer on the bottom. So, um, I immediately was jumping for joy at the look of this, it's it's modern and traditional, it's got a really good, I think, color, um, choice. Um, I immediately called up one of my website, creating friends to get his take on it before I said anything and he said all the same stuff, which made me feel good. Trust these thoughts. Everything looks good?
Is the search bar?
There is, there, we are gonna add that, that's actually one of the things we we, I talked about, we're gonna, in between services here, we're gonna put in a little search link.
Is it down, is it down at the bottom though, I think, I think I saw that.
There may be one down at the bottom as well.
No, no.
No, but sign up.
No.
Okay.
So once he hears from us that this looks good, he's gonna start moving forward and starting to populate pages and he'll be able to uh, then send settle, uh, sample pages out based on the content that I've been updating on our current site, so that automatically when it goes live, it's already set with a new site.
Excellent.
Fantastic.
I've been here there for so long, I'm real excited.
I'm very excited as well, and I think beside the new look and beside better accessibility and beside the fact that we can populate important things that people know and like because it's WordPress and because Jeremy knows what he's doing, we can track where people go to see where the most prevalent things are. We could even set up the quick links to be some of like the top pages based on what people ask for, there's a lot of options there. Um, it's just gonna be better, more accessible, more user friendly, look cleaner, look nicer, and it's gonna empower a lot of us to be able to do it instead of just me being the guy who knows how to write code, it's the writing village code guy.
But accessibility for people out there, that's what's so important on current one, I see difficult.
Yes, yeah.
So.
So Rob, you're seeing a green light, are you moving forward with it?
I'm ex- I expected it to be a green light, so yes.
Green, yeah.
Green.
Green light.
Green.
Fantastic, alright, awesome, so that's coming, I think we're still on schedule for probably around the new year to to switch over live to the, to the new site. Um, but yeah, I'm I'm ecstatic, I'm ecstatic about the work. Alright, so keep bearing with us, um, hiring needs and updates, we've talked about these kind of casually, um, part-time code enforcement officers, the first thing, I actually did connect with um, the one candidate from the list, um, I can talk to you more in executive session about what possibilities are there for that. Um, it sounds like we can either decide this could be a possibility or we can advertise it and put it out there and I think we'll decide that in executive session, I don't think we need official board motion to advertise for a position, do we?
No.
Okay, so the likelihood is, um, with his ability, it's kind of a small window because of his other jobs right now. Um, but if we think that that won't work, we are gonna advertise it and we'll probably have it open for maybe ten days, maybe through next Friday. Um, and we'll post it uh, online, we'll put it on Facebook, we'll put it on um, um, in newspapers and so on. Uh, secondly, we have um, an opening for a full-time DPW laborer because uh, one of our full-time laborers is on leave, which is great, fantastic for him, but we need a body. Um, so based on what we've talked about, it sounds like we wanna advertise this, so we're gonna be advertising for a full-time DPW laborer. Um, that is as per civil service description of labor, um, well, and it sounds like, are we all good to have it open through Friday of next week and then?
Is that just for the leave period or a permanent ad, any person's home time?
Permanent, I think, I think we're looking permanent, that's some, sort of a decision, we have, we have.
So it's, it's added staffing.
What's that?
It's added staffing in the person.
It will be in two years.
It will be in a year too.
Alright, it's gonna be gone for a year, it's gonna be gone for a year, the second year it will be.
First all, in two years. Um.
Yeah. Yes, so there are possibilities there, but yes, but I think uh, it makes sense to offer as a full-time, long-term, see how it works.
The first year it doesn't cost us anymore Doug, because, right, so.
Yeah, yeah, but to to Doug's point.
Oh, absolutely, I understand your topic.
Yeah, totally makes sense, so we'll post it, uh, we will uh, advertise it and then once we go through
Yep.
um, resumes, applications, we'll set up interviews and, uh, maybe even have a special meeting or in the December meeting we'll be appointing, depending on on how the schedule works. Alright, um, we've talked about this, we can't formally figure out if we've ever definitively done this and set the cost, so I put out for you guys a sample resolution that would officially determine for the record what we are paying planning and zoning board members, historically, it wasn't a paid thing, it was a volunteer thing, but also we were having trouble getting bodies and we didn't feel like it made sense to have it as an unpaid thing, so I will throw up the resolution as kind of a uh, starter, um, starting point for this discussion as soon as I find it. I think I have like thirty thousand windows open, um, and just as a, um, procedural reasons.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if we want to edit this or adjust this tonight, what we would initially do is we would formally introduce it and then we would take, um, motions to uh, modify it however we want, vote on those and then that would allow us to eventually adopt it. So this is very basic, uh, as Doug pointed out over email, it does not include, um, um, um. What's that?
Retro activity.
Yeah, retroactivity, sorry, paying back through and it doesn't say the date, I know we've talked about this since easily the beginning of twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. So we would have to decide retroactively how far are we going back, are we gonna start January one of twenty twenty-four and then apply the pay that way. But this resolution right now as it sets would set members at twenty dollars per meeting and chairpersons at twenty-five dollars per meeting. It's up to you guys what you guys wanna do, obviously, it's more than the zero that has historically been the case. Um, regularly, it's roughly monthly or by month, or once every two months, kind of depending on business and what's coming up.
And we're talking five, five member board, right?
Five member board.
Which ninety-nine percent of the time, we don't have a hundred percent attendance.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, schedule ones, yeah.
But they only get paid for the meetings.
Right.
Yeah, you only get paid for the board, yeah.
Yeah. So this fiscal year.
We have the money budget for this. We just haven't officially that we can find definitively for the record said this is what we're setting it for, um.
So I have a question as far as they are appointed positions.
Yeah. Yes.
So I'm assuming they would be paid as an employee?
I assume ten ninety-nine, they're independent, I know.
Four ten nine, that's what I'm asking.
I think they're independent.
Yeah.
I feel like we do too, but I don't remember how that one's all dealt.
I don't know.
I'm just saying the amount that you're gonna pay them, if you're gonna be taking taxes on.
Not much.
Yeah.
Oh, right, no, I, I think it's ten ninety-nine, you have to go that way.
No, yeah.
I, I, I think it's independent, because they're, they are independent, like, or they're not solely controlling.
Right.
Yes.
If you have that option.
That would make sense.
Right, ten ninety-nine in that, that that amount's not gonna even have to qualify for filing for taxes.
Yes, yes.
I.
And can we, you can just do that, Elena, for the first one.
I think we need to do a little research.
Yeah, I don't think you can pay it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we looked into this before.
I would say that's. Ten ninety-nine is in a contract.
We're still in contract, you know, we're.
Yeah.
They are, they are.
How do you do that?
Yeah, but I think.
It's not an important village.
Well, we don't have to decide regarding this, this is just setting it, this is more of a procedural question than we have to have a fit answer.
Well, we just do that, if it's a employee, twenty dollars.
Say that again, Doug.
It could be thirteen.
Hopefully it can be ten ninety-nine.
Doug, what did you, I couldn't hear you just.
Oh, it's it's just that twenty dollars, if we end up going that way and that we need to, twenty dollars, it's maybe end up thirteen.
It's. Yeah, twenty dollars is.
Yeah.
It won't even hit the six month.
No, it's not gonna, it's not gonna entice anyone to be in this, to come.
What's that?
They still have to claim the money though, so.
I'm gonna have to look that up.
I mean, either way you look at it, you may give them a ten ninety-nine, they gotta claim that money anyway.
Yeah.
And pay their, the board's having social experience.
Yeah, I think so, but now, ten ninety-nine, you have to report it, so we're seventy dollars. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, do you have to do it ten ninety-nine at all, I mean, that's not, is that enough money to qualify?
That's what we're trying to figure out and it sounds like.
That's.
You have to, it's six hundred dollars.
It's not, that money means.
Yeah.
Twelve, they don't even meet once a month.
No.
So no, you wouldn't even have to, you would not have to claim that.
Um, Denise, what's the budget line that would come out of?
You wouldn't make enough money.
Correct.
When it's ten ninety-nine, self-employed person, if you don't make it's like six or eight. Twenty-five point four.
Wait, I would.
Side question, how do you know that?
How do you know?
Me?
Do you mean, so like what my item is at, she's like eighty-three, twenty-four, ninety-nine?
Why don't, why don't we research?
Good numbers.
What we have to do.
Yes.
And then, and then back in.
So before we, before we do that, um.
I don't think in New York, they usually pay anybody ten ninety-nine anymore, so, and I have eleven employees and they don't get ten, why are you shaking your head, Bob?
Cause you're not asked to, you shouldn't be just out speaking.
Well, everybody else is speaking right now, why shouldn't it?
Uh, it's, it's, it's.
But I used to work as a finance, and then I had it for a while, but well, no, it hasn't been that long, but I used to, if it's over five hundred dollars, what is it?
It's alright, it's alright.
I think it's six.
Well, you don't, but they.
It's six hundred, it's six hundred.
You don't have to report it.
No, it's six hundred.
So one thing, um, one thing to consider, we only budgeted five hundred dollars for the fiscal year.
Do you guys know that for sure, Bob, do you know that for sure?
No, I'm talking about.
Yeah, do you know that for sure?
Uh.
I didn't say for sure, I said that's what I used to.
On six hundred, I know for sure. You do know that for sure?
So.
I think they have a better contract, but I think that's the question.
So since.
Can they do that or can they not be?
I think you can.
Why don't we, why don't we just refer to legal counsel to find out the answer for the next meeting?
So.
We already did this research before, it's in man, so we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we did this, we did this.
Yes.
I'm not gonna beat around the bush, keep going ahead.
Okay, regardless of how we decide this and we'll decide it for the next meeting, retroactively where we wanna go back to so we can add it into the resolution. January one twenty-four?
Yes.
Yes.
Fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, which would be like June one.
When did they start their appointments?
Technically, it'd be the start of the budget maybe.
Before. A lot of them were twenty twenty-two or twenty-three.
Let's do January.
January twenty twenty-four.
That's when we really, I think that's when we.
We go retroactively back to January twenty twenty-four? Okay, okay.
That's when we were able to.
Alright. Okay, so, okay, we'll figure this out, we'll have a resolution ready for next time, it'll be retroactive to January twenty-four. Uh, we will figure out what the answer is to this question and how it applies to pay.
Okay.
Alright, great. Thank you, uh, hold on man, I got spreadsheets open going over here. Uh, number seven, oh, alright, financial software review, in our process of looking over how we do finances software-wise, there is an issue that we have known about that is dated back to two thousand three? Two thousand, around two thousand three, that was back when Mayor Reynolds uh, was was mayor. Um, that as I have gotten more into this, I have realized how much extra work it is causing our village staff. Um, we have two main software programs, we have QuickBooks for financing and Williamson Law, which handles our water sewer refuse billing. Populates the bills when when people pay online, they pay through that software. The two programs do not talk. Um, so every time, say, and you're gonna have to correct me if I'm wrong, when Williamson Law creates all of those invoices, they then have to be entered individually into QuickBooks. And then if a payment comes in, the payment is entered into both programs. And then if payments are late and penalties apply, when those penalties are paid, it again has to be updated in both programs. And if it gets releaved, then it has to be updated in both programs again.
At two different times of the year.
Yes.
It's kind of become more apparent
Yeah.
with training personnel over the last two to three years.
Yes.
Uh.
Yes, and you know.
We used to have, you know, and there used to be base systems that kind of, that integrated and.
Yep.
A lot of the software vendors that we've talked with, now we're going back, we haven't looked probably at least six or seven, but a lot of villages that are in New York State's structure, how they bill for water sewer and then also refuse. Obviously, um, many municipalities do not do it that same way, so being able to find a software vendor that will upload all the billing automatically into the accounting, hasn't been a good option.
Yeah. So.
But we need to actually reach out to Ivy, uh, upcoming months, yeah.
Other communities.
See what other villages and even if we had to restructure how we, you know, structure our bills, um, see what other villages are doing and what software they're using, because using the two, not talking to each other, it's just really confusing for everyone that's new, as well as just.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not efficient, it's uh.
Exceedingly time confusing and you're basically double or tripling the risk of one simple error, and if there's an error, you gotta go into both to chase.
And then you gotta reconcile the two, which.
Yeah, so this is gonna be a, I think, a sort of a systemic change that I think we've been putting off because of how big of a deal it's gonna be, but I think we
Right.
I think we can't any longer.
Right.
So I just wanted to put this on the radar, um, we have more to talk about in the future regarding older water sewer refuse bills, the fact that when they're releaved, most of them get releaved to village tax, but if you're outside the village, then it's a town one and historically, things weren't set up before that, so there's a lot more to talk about there, but I just kind of wanted to put that on the radar, uh, especially for Doug and Brett who are overseeing finances, I think one of the next steps is gonna be reaching out to other municipalities. Municipalities know the QuickBooks is never really good for municipal work, it's, municipal work is too weird and nuanced. Um, but I think that's gonna be our, one of our first next steps as we look to fix this over the next year, so.
Great idea.
Alright, last quick one, um, there's really nothing huge to update, we're still expecting the first settlement for, uh, the first lump sum of three M settlement money coming to the village, which we've talked about for a couple meetings, sometime before the calendar uh, year ends, that that is hasn't changed, uh, it's the same as it was, it just hasn't come in yet, I know we talked about a couple meetings ago, um, possible uses of spending that money, we still have that here. It's in old business just kind of as a placekeeper, but I just wanna make sure, I know people are wondering about that, um, it is not yet here, it's separate from our own local situation with St. Cobain and Honeywell. Um, but it is coming and we have plans for it.
Um, I got an answer.
Yes. Yes.
So back in May of twenty twenty-four, we did have the conversation and it was determined that they would be employees. That was confirmed with NICOM.
Oh, okay.
I know.
Which means.
That was, that was email thread in May?
I think we did call. Yep, May, May, May.
Okay, cause I was sitting here thinking, I don't remember email.
I think we didn't call NICOM yet, yeah.
NICOM, for the, you know, no New York conference of mayors, they're fantastic for helping municipalities, specifically the, specifically.
Yeah, I'm not, no, I remember, you said, yeah, you said.
And and actually with that amount of money, you should probably make some of the polls, because then we're like. And and actually with that amount of money, you should probably make some of the polls, because then we're like, they will need it, they will need it.
So we do need, we do need, now that we know that, that's great, thank you for finding that, um, you may wanna forward that uh to all of us again, so we have it. Uh, perfect, um, and well, that'll help us decide what we wanna set the money at, okay. Alright, thank you for um letting me get through all those updates, important projects, things going on.
Did you decide on the amount?
What's that? We have not yet, we're gonna wait and decide it unless you guys wanna go back to discussing it now, but I feel like.
No, let's put it all together, so.
We'll put it all together, present it in December.
Right. For next one.
Yes. Okay, people to be heard section, just a quick review of the rules of conduct that we've been had going since the organizational meeting. Uh, public may speak only to the public comment, people to be heard period of the meeting, um, or at such time as the majority of the board allows. Speaker must be resigned uh recognized by the presiding officers, speakers must step, I'm I'm modifying this, I have the spot next to the flag right here, it's kind of the spot to stand to address the board, so please use that, uh, speakers must give their name, address, and organization if any. Speakers must limit their remarks to five minutes on a given topic, although the presiding officer may limit the time at their discretion, especially if there's a bazillion people wanna talk. Speakers may not yield any time that they have to another speaker, or members may with per a permission of the presiding officer interrupt the speaker during their remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification or information, there is no requirement to the board member or the board responds and or has dialogue with the speaker, discretion for that is left to the board member with permission of the presiding officer. Uh, all remarks must be addressed to the board as a body and not to any particular specific member thereof. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good ta- and good taste, inappropriate language will not be allowed. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board also separately by running communication should they want to. Uh, just as a reminder, we do uh audio recall of all of our meetings, which is not something we have to do, but we like to do that, and they go on our uh YouTube page. Uh, so I'm gonna just get a quick uh count of how many people would like to speak, and we'll set up an order and a turnlist, how many people would like to speak to the board tonight? One, two, three, four, five, six, alright. Anybody have a particular desire to uh go first? Please, go for it.
Excuse me. Hi, uh, my name is Patty Zalinski, I, um, my husband and I are here tonight in regards to the possible sale of the former BFW building, um, we've lived across the street from there for forty three years, and we're trying to make sure that our property value is protected. I don't know if there's anyone here other than Bob who remembers that there was a PUD, which is a planned use development, um, application that needed to change the um use of the building uh to a residential um building. So along with that, there were a lot of contingencies that went along, um, the landlord needed to follow, and there's a um, I have a a list, I have some paperwork that I could make copies of and, um, you know, uh, give it to all of you. Um, but with the potential sale uh of the building, we're very concerned that, um, the contingencies that were put on the use of the building will stay in effect, and I do have um, some minutes of board meetings and planning board meetings that where we were assured should the building ever be sold, that these things would continue to be in place.
Okay.
So the, uh, we live on Two Scott Street, across the street from it, um.
Yes.
And I'm not sure, I mean, that any of you even have ever heard of a PUD, uh.
Well, that was that was new to me.
Yeah, yeah, um, and.
Well, I know all that.
Yeah. Yeah, so i- if, um,
What's that? Yeah.
You know, I I don't know, I wanna know how to proceed.
Well, we meant to keep the neighborhood's character, right, that's why we put it there.
From you. Yes, yes, I mean, there were things that, um, he, the owner was going to have to do, um, to satisfy neighbors and, um, and also to preserve the historical integrity of the building as well.
Yeah. You said, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, I can't.
That's okay.
You said you had documents, minutes and and such.
Yeah, yeah, I have board, we went to a number of board meetings and, um,
Sure.
have a lot of things on record, and it was, uh, I believe the application would
If.
uh, had to go through the county for approval and the planning board and then the local board, um.
Do you know when that was, Patty?
I'm sorry?
Do you know when it was, what year, what year?
It's on the papers, Patty.
Is it, yeah, that is, I, uh.
Patty. Patty, if you can draw those.
Matt Monahan was the mayor.
Okay, that's why I was wondering.
So that would be oh seven to eleven, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
If you can drop those off to the village office, um, we can just scan them real fast and get them back to you, and then we'll have them.
Okay. Yes. Okay.
And we can start looking into that.
Okay, thank you, we would really appreciate it.
The chief for instead of colonel, it's more like two, right?
Yes, and Mark, I'll probably wanna make sure you get them as well, just in case something's related to the sale.
And code, right. Cool. Yeah, because really, how would it be, I mean, it's gonna fall under code anyway, wouldn't it be, because, I mean.
Bob, there was a lot of stipulations as to how many tenants could be in one building.
Mm-hmm.
How many apartments, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
How many vehicles, no pets, there's a lot of things he agreed to that he didn't follow through on.
Okay.
Okay.
And it became a clash of, uh, had, police were called, became quite a thing.
Okay.
And so we've kind of stepped back because it got better. The first, I mean, the police were there once a week, probably in the last three or four years, it's been fine for the same tenant state.
Mm-hmm.
But we're worried.
Now that it's for sale, that you're in the back of square one, you're afraid of.
Right.
Right, right.
Yeah, I get you, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this up, dropping off, and we'll see.
I will do that, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you very much.
Yep, uh, who else want, who wanted to go next, just out of curiosity, do you wanna go next?
Sure.
Go for it, please, I remember names, street address, I forgot to mention that. Last one.
Uh, Peter Matson, speaking on behalf of Bistro Forty Two, we're we're gonna submit for the next smaller round for the New York Forward
Nice.
to ha- put a handicap ramp on the east side of the building. Um, the the big caveat is where the status of the Catania property is and where you stand uh with that, because it's, we're we're right on a zero, we can't set it back.
We have no updates.
No update.
Unfortunately, no.
So, you know, are you familiar with the story behind Catania and the East?
We tried.
I I know a lot of history, I remember, I believe or not, I was involved when you wanted to build a restaurant called Daddy Bumpus.
Yes, yeah.
Yep, I mean, I'd be happy to.
Of course, I was.
Are you aware of the past hit like year and a half?
No.
So ba- the quick version is, no one knew this for like seven or nine months, but he passed away.
Yeah.
Down in New Jersey, and then there was a funeral service that that uh elected official put together as a for a veteran, which is fantastic. Um, but there's questions of no one has claimed the property, there's no will, so it's basically ambivalently in the hands of New Jersey.
In the head of New Jersey.
Because it would be transferred, Dan, you can speak more to it.
Not on that?
It may, it may be like what they cr- call, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Elena, a true intestine estate, meaning like there, so there's like a pecking order, if you don't will, like goes to your spouse and your children and your parents and your siblings. Like, nobody claimed the body for nine months, it may literally reach the end of the line where it goes to the state of New Jersey, because there's no living relatives, there's nobody coming to claim it, in that case, I don't know what probate procedures are for the state of New Jersey, but I imagine that once it's all adjudicated or whatever, it gets auctioned by the state of New Jer- I assume that's how they dispose of.
And the crazy question is, if we if we could, if we could design a structure that was supported by the building side of it, we still can't compete on the on the airspace, right? We can't hang over it.
Yeah, put it, put it, yeah.
Yeah, like uh like this, yeah.
Yeah, it might go over the airspace, but not on the.
Well, no, you think, right.
Are you, you're talking right here.
Right, not on the actual ground, great, Peter, you're talking?
Sorry?
Not on the ground, but it off, you're talking airspace, yeah.
Angle, angle coming off, the building, overhanging the property line.
Not even. Not even, if it could be designed on a vertical and could support without an angle.
You're talking right here, right?
Yes, on the on the.
Yes, but you're saying that that it would overhang the property line without touching it.
Yeah. That's correct, that's correct.
To go down to the back, is that what, Peter, or would you go up, yeah.
Right, no, no.
Yes.
Yeah, who's gonna complain with dead trees?
You could do it, and then the question, Jersey drive up here.
The overgrown trees?
What's that?
I mean, it sounds great, I wish we could say, somebody, we actually already s- tried to sell it illegally.
We all.
Oh, no, we we know about that.
Yeah, yeah.
I called that lady and she was quite surprised.
So we, I mean, we've wanted to have this property taken care of for years, we know that right underneath here, the sidewalk is undermined.
Right.
We have huge concerns about that, um, but we're stuck because we can't do anything, um. We.
If you do it, you're at your own risk.
You're at your own risk, but there's eminent domain, but then it's attorneys and cutting down things.
Probably no, 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 no.
Well, I mean, his domain has to be for public use.
Well.
Does that lie, if the eminent domain, so that he could make it wide enough for someone in a wheelchair to enter the door?
Lot of. Yes, a couple years of taxes. Um, we can talk to the county, I'm I'm sorry, we can talk to the county, because there are unpaid taxes, I only think it's a couple years, so it's probably outside of their normal start the foreclosure process. But because we have information, maybe we can talk to them and get them to speed it up, they've been receptive of that in the past. And it becomes.
Yeah, the state's aware of the situation as far as the, I can touch the sidewalk.
Yeah, so we are also interested in having something done, and your idea sounds fantastic, so.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Peter.
Thank you.
I mean, we do, we also have some time, I believe that the small grants will be announced in March or so, so we've got like five months.
Yes. Yeah.
To see if something can happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, I'm gonna make a note, I speak with county.
I may call the Bergen County, um, probate court and ask what the update is, the last we had heard, there was there was nobody.
That would be, that would be fantastic.
Like, they're not even the third cousin to come claim the estate and and just sell it.
Oh, come on, you're here for nine months for a guy.
Dan, if you if you do that, I'll start reach out to the county and see where things are at and how.
Yeah. Yeah, I got myself a note here to reach back out to them, but
Alright, thank you.
I know they have to take so much time to search your relatives and this, it's.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Uh, there are foreign people who wanted to go next? Mary Ann, go for it, thank you.
Mary Ann Zwicklauer, seventy three East Housit Road, Housit Falls, New York, and, um, I'm the president of Housit Rising and wanted to let everybody know that the tree lighting this year will be held on Small Business Saturday, which is November thirtieth, the Saturday following Thanksgiving, the tree lighting will happen at five P M. Um, Bill Geller is involved, uh, with the Brass Fortune of the Band, um, the choir will be involved. Um, Santa will be coming on a J C tractor, as he has in the past, and.
It's the real Santa though, so, you know, if you guys are thinking it's just another one, uh-huh.
And then, um, we'll be going to the second floor of the woodblock building, uh, to um, spend time with Santa, if, um, any of the kids wanna follow him into the building, uh, they can uh, sit and talk to him there.
That's the, that's the same day as Small Business Saturday, right?
That's the same day as Small Business Saturday, where the armory, um, I mean, obviously, we're asking everybody to come downtown to do the shopping. Um, the armory, yep, the armory will have, um, forty vendors, um, the Historic Society has, I don't know how many vendors, There's Mark was a refugee too. and I believe Housit Nutrition also has vendors, so.
And all the downtown shops, they'll be open.
And everybody will be open. And on a personal note, just a comment because it came up tonight, it wasn't a forethought, um, I went to the free training for zoning and planning last week in Renssler, um, and, um, nobody was there, uh, from either town or village, um, so you might wanna, if you're going to compensate your people, you might wanna tie it to them actually accomplishing their four hours of training that they're supposed to do.
I know.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, a quick question.
That's a good idea.
Hey, Deb.
Mary Ann?
Deb.
Mary Ann, quick.
Oh, quick question.
About the tree, is that, is it a tree?
Aaron's gonna come back.
He never did, okay, okay, but that's the tree you're talking, a tree for the tree lighting?
Oh, you go. Yes.
Okay, cause I have a a person who wants to donate, um, a tree, probably.
Super, I think Aaron will probably need it the week of weekend before.
Well, that's, we, so I wanted to get, yeah, I I told that, I've been I've been waiting for Aaron to come, yeah.
Yeah, we, I, I'm gonna have it, so I'm gonna have to take it.
Okay.
So I've got a a donor and it's gotta be tagged, it gotta be picked, so we need to have to make the range, it's gonna need a trailer to pick it up, so, I talked to Kenny.
Super, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, brother. Alright, three more, who would like to speak next?
I guess I agree.
Go for it, thank you, sir.
Sir.
No, oh, there was two of you stood up at once.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
No, that's alright.
Okay, Sandy Gabriel, First Street, Housit Falls.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what was the address?
Six.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
I do, I have a question, I understand that our local police department is not working as a team that fits together on the same page as each other. And it's come to my attention that we have been paying an officer for full duty when he's unable to perform his full extent of his responsibilities, unable to testify in a court of law. And if he's getting his full pay, we're paying for someone who's unable to perform full duties. And that doesn't sit well with my tax dollar. And I'm wondering why is that? It's like paying a school teacher that works full time when they're only there for half the day. That's my question. And is there only one officer that cannot perform their full duties, but they're getting paid full pay? Is it just one, or is there more? Can anybody answer that question for me?
It's a good question.
It's it's not really a question answer format, so you we can, you can say what you'd like to say and.
We'll hear that.
Yeah.
Hmm, this is my second, now, I have been paying taxes here for thirty two and a half years. Not just village taxes, my late husband and I owned a business outside of the village, so we paid the town of Housit tax as well. This is my second meeting in all these years, and I can't even have a question answered, that does not sit well with my pocket. I worked all my life and the only time I was behind on my taxes was after I lost my husband, God rest his soul, eleven years ago. And I was only seven months behind. But I caught up, I was always on time, have been, and I can't have that one question answered, I wonder why? My tax dollars are not working for me, what's going on, folks? Do we have an officer that does not perform his full extent of what he earns?
No.
No, we do not.
Again, not not a, not a question answer situation, if you wanna email me, we can certainly discuss things further.
Okay.
Set up a call, that's fine.
I would love to say more, but not in a public session.
You did, you did say, the last, I'm so sorry, but the last time I came to a meeting, it was to ask permission to put up a fence, because I had problem neighbors who were on drugs and they were harassing me. You, Mister Mayor, said you would call me the following day, and which you never did.
That.
I did get permission to put up that fence, but since they had vacated, so that's been resolved. You never did call me. Will someone call me with an answer? Anybody can give me an answer as to whether we have an officer that cannot testify in a court of law?
If you wanna leave your number, I will do a much better job of calling you back.
Who do I leave it with?
Do you wanna write, just write it down with them, okay?
Absolutely, I need that in person, for my peace of mind and my bottom line, my bottom dollar.
See, you know, okay. Thank you.
Please, thank you.
I'm assuming that's it, Sandy, for now?
It's a public meeting, I give it to.
I'll take it, and I'll make sure that everyone knows, thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Sandy. Alright, uh, number five.
Artur Hunt, I'm here tonight as the Housit Department Chief.
Sergeant Hunt, I'm here tonight as the Housit Fire Department Chief, and I guess my comments are three sixty from what we just talked about. So this past Saturday morning, we had a car accident up on Route seven, and one of the individuals that was involved in the car accident decided to start to assault some firemen on a scene. So I'm here to say thank you to the Housit Falls Fire Department for their quick response because the next closest police agency was coming out of Brunswick.
Police Department, not Fire Department, to thank the police Department, okay, sorry.
Yeah, so it was good to have the village come out there to help us out because we had people tussling on the ground and waiting from Brunswick, we're trying to, waiting from Brunswick was quite the high range, so.
Oh, my god.
Wow.
Vudos, uh, the two officers that showed up with Steve and uh, Paul, and uh, Steve did quick actions and helped get things under control.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thanks for coming, right?
Yeah, thanks for saying.
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
So anyways, you know who I am, Samir Muhammad Ali, I own a village pizzeria and deli.
Number six.
So obviously, you're all aware that I have required some information on the officers and the village of Housit Falls. Now, to answer your question, yes, you are, there, there is one that cannot do his job, and it's right here, and you're more than welcome to use it, if it just returns.
Oh, we're talking.
You don't want it, that's fine, um.
I haven't got time, I.
Just a reminder, Chico, just a reminder, your dress and the clothes.
Okay. Okay, so that, that being said, um, and, and Steve is a great officer, he's a, he's a young kid, I like him a lot, I think he's, he's a good guy. I think uh, Officer Riley is a good guy, you know, but um, I had some issues with, uh, you know, the officer that's in the building right now, a few of them actually. And as I came in, I left you some paperwork with some police reports on there, that, you know, the mayor decided not wanna look at them. But I don't really understand why, and there's also, the Attorney General is on there too. During that particular situation, the officer that's in this room showed up at my restaurant on a busy Friday night. While the particular individual in that report threatened to murder and kill everybody in the building. And his response to that report was, go home Vincent. As he's screaming down the road, I'm gonna kill everybody in the building. So he proceeded, because I called him out for not doing his job, he wasn't de-escalating, he was sending the guy home. Now, what if he came back with a weapon? What if he did kill, my kids work there, what if he killed one of my children? You know, but yet, we sit here every time we come in the month, in, in here month, we got this guy rolling his eyes, shaking his head, you don't wanna answer any questions. But yet, we're gonna allow Vincent Constantino to threaten to murder people and to be told to go home. My question, why is that? Why is that okay? Why would he be allowed to go home and get a weapon and come back and do something that could have cost me a lot, my children? And in that case, that would have been, that would affect everybody sitting in this room today. Because I would, I don't take it lightly that that was allowed, and Deb, I don't appreciate the sarcasm.
I didn't say anything, you.
Okay, I don't appreciate the fact that that was allowed and he was told to go home during that incident, okay? And not only did that officer, see Deb, if you cannot sit there and act like a professional, why are you sitting here?
I'm listening to you. I'm reading your reports, I had a question.
Don't read, don't, don't talk over me then.
She hasn't looked at it, I'm sorry.
Don't talk over me then, it's rude. Okay, I'm not a thug, okay, I'm not a bully, I'm here for a reason. We cannot have the officers act like tyrants in the village of Housit Falls because it suits them. We cannot have them lie on documents and get away with it because they can, because they think they can, alright? Obviously, you're all aware that I know what's going on with the village police, correct? I know that you know that, so we, let's not play the games. He got sent home, later on, apparently, he got arrested, okay? But in the meantime, that officer that came to my shop physically assaulted me, and that's not funny, Bob, it's not cute, it's not fun.
I'm not laughing, I'm not laughing.
Hey, do you remember the comment, don't be a crybaby, 'cause I, I can show it to you, do you remember it?
No, no.
He physically assaulted me in front of my whole staff, okay? When I shoved him off me and told him, turn around, look what you just did, you know what he did? He said, I'm not doing this with you, Chico, he got in his squad car and he left. This is the guy that you guys are promoting to chief, right? Am I correct? Is that really what you want, is that, you have children, some of you have children in the village of Housit Falls, correct? Is that really what we're gonna do, we're gonna allow that to, to occur? Is that okay, is that, is that okay, Bob, is it, yes or no, is that okay? Huh?
I'm not answering.
You, you know, you know why you're not gonna answer me, because you know I'm right.
'Cause if you remember right, when Rob said the meeting, you don't, you addressed the board, that's all you, this isn't a question and answer.
I'm addressing the board, you're on the board, I'm talking to you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
It's not a question and answer session.
Hold on, hold on.
You keep saying what you gotta say, you got a couple of minutes, you say what you gotta say. Alright, so the newspaper, newspaper, just so you guys are all aware, the newspaper is aware of the situation. They have all the information, not just one newspaper, many newspapers. So that means that we are gonna all sit in this room, and you're gonna have your little private meetings, but I want you to know, I'm not a thug, I'm not a bully. And I do not appreciate being assaulted. I don't, I don't like to be called a thug, I don't like to be called a bully, and I certainly am a businessman in the village of Housit Falls with multiple properties, multiple. Okay, I pay a lot more taxes in, in, on my seconds.
Ten second, ten second, should I wrap up, please?
Excuse me, I pay a lot more taxes than most of you in this room do, okay?
Ten second, should I wrap up? Thanks.
So I do not appreciate that, just so you know, this is, this is with the paper, the paper is doing stories on this shit. Excuse my language, um, and I do not appreciate being assaulted by an officer, I do not, it's not cool, it's not funny, it's not cute.
Hey, Chico, gotta wrap up.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Ain't no one here to do anything about it, trust me.
Can I ask him a question during this, is that a no?
Not, not in the meeting setting, you can certainly go have a conversation out, out there, there's no problem. Alright, oh, I didn't realize this was open.
No one.
Alright, hearing that there are no one else would like to uh, speak, we are going to move forward.
Can we close the meeting, the public hearing?
Uh, oh, yes, I'm sorry, I forgot to put that on my slides here. Uh, would anyone else like to speak regarding the proposed local law, the stop sign on Interstate number?
No one.
Abbott and Wilder?
Yes.
Got it.
No one.
Alright, hearing none, looking for a motion to close the public hearing regarding proposed local law number five.
Have a good night, bye.
Alright, okay. Megan, motion?
Second.
Second, sorry. I know we're kinda distracted by all the stuff, but we have a motion and a second, close public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, poser's extensions, carries, do you guys wanna jump to the new business now or just wait until we get there?
Well, let's take care of it and get it.
You wanna take care of it right now, alright. So we're gonna move forward, uh, skip ahead a little bit into, that's the wrong paper, new business, new business sign.
Do you need to adapt the type of poll with yet? The new stop sign, if you'd ask you off.
No, my agenda.
'Cause I don't think they've gone for a poll, I, I don't.
Wait, Deb.
Right, I'll check with you.
Deb, what are you asking?
There you go, good point.
Okay, uh, so.
Oh, but I think one more thing, First Street is awesome, I came here today tonight and it's beautiful, thank you.
Yeah, alright, so we have, uh, in new business, uh, we're skipping ahead for just a brief moment, resolution enacting a local law to add stop sign in the village of Housit Falls. This is the official resolution, now therefore be it resolved, that the village board does hereby adopt and enact a local law to be known as Local Law Number Five of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the local law is listed as follows, I need someone to officially offer the resolution, Deb, in seconds, Brett was very excited about that, further discussion on this?
Come on, Brett.
Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Olivia.
Trusty Allen, trusty Arthur, trusty Ari, yes, trusty Susan, trusty Hansman, deputy mayor, and Mayor Rafferty.
Yes.
Yep. Yes.
Yes, pass, thank you for the reminder, stop sign is forthcoming. Alright, uh, please work, Sergeant Hudson.
I didn't hear.
Can you stand up so we can hear you better, 'cause it is hard to hear you. Give me one moment, or, no, you can go, I'll, I'll got the reports up online.
Couple additions to the report, um, okay, I'll put on the three events that we did, uh, we did country boarding in North Creek's choirhouse. Uh, the um, kids event at the armory and the parade.
Mm-hmm.
We also did trick or treating on some of those stations, um, so like, we're all well attended, um, but it was busy month, so a lot of.
Yeah.
Lots of trainings going on, uh, we are doing the toy drive again this year. Um, Officer Fisher, Officer Ren, and are working with Nikki Martin from the school in the Juana, so they're gonna be doing the toy drive again. The flyers are up, and on our Facebook page as well, so if you have a question on where to get the ornaments, I think you gotta get with Nikki, Nikki has the ornaments. So she worried us the whole election.
They're spreading a lot of posts, like Nikki and them, but none of them say where to pay if you want the raffle or any of that, so that'd be a good thing to get there, like a, like a, something.
On the boxes that are spread around the village, on the box is Nikki's phone number and email.
Okay.
At the bottom of our post is her phone number and email, so just email her directly the questions, okay?
What does the collection?
Collection and bring it to her.
Yep.
Otherwise, that's all I.
Any questions for Sergeant Hudson? I just lost the reports. Uh, where'd I go, here we are. Alright, hearing none, I am looking for a motion to approve the police department report.
Motion.
With a few things he added, I'll give that to Doug.
Jerk, second.
And second, Bobby, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Poser's extensions, alright, carries, moving on, I'm gonna scroll through all this stuff, but if you want a hard copy, we still have some hard copies of reports up here. Fascinating data, I forgot to mention, um, keeping an eye on mileage on our four vehicles, they're getting up there. But I know we're, we're kinda prioritizing that in the future. Alright, uh, code enforcement, um, Mark, I had told Mark that I was gonna remember to put on the Third Street building on the agenda, I promptly forgot, 'cause that's my role. Um, but I remembered that, so we'll come back to that, but Mark, anything you wanna highlight or trustees, anything you wanna ask Mark?
Oh.
So, yeah, the thirty-third street property, I had sent out a, an email to the mayor, a couple others, just to try and get the ball rolling on that. It's Mole Home, that's on, obviously on Third Street, that uh, really has fallen into disrepair in these recent years, we had a lot of people standing there at one time. I was uh, very nervous during that time of, of what could happen there, so uh, I'd like to be able to move forward with that. I can uh, work with Ren, I can put her in the, in the mail list to do what we need to do. I, I believe the code does give the code enforcement officer the offer, the um, authorization to deem it as a building that can be removed for safety reasons. Uh, I don't see why we would, in this particular case, why would we need an attorney, or not an attorney, but a engineer to comment on it. It's pretty obvious, it's in pretty sad shape, uh, I think with the village board's blessing, we could just move forward, how do we need to do it? I know the owner doesn't want anything to do with the property, I'm sure if we needed him to sign up on something to do. It probably is gonna go for taxes in a couple of years, but um, I just don't see us, you know, I've already found a window open there. Even though we boarded, the door shut, one of the doors just kicked in, um, I found a window open recently, so I just thought, I just don't think this. Should be something easy enough to do.
We shouldn't wait, we shouldn't wait for it goes up for county taxes, we should move on this now.
I agree, I think this is the, this is like one of the big priorities for taking down buildings.
I mean, it's a, it's a trailer, it's literally, it's a trailer in the middle of the village, which, you know, is no longer, I mean, it was there when I was a kid, it's been there that long.
Wow.
That's a long time.
Yeah, Moby Dick was a minnow.
Preceding that, the Third Street.
Precedurally, when we've taken down buildings, we use an engineering report as per the unsafe structure law, do we, do you need to do that again?
Let me look into it, I know Mark's email came in when I was out of the country, and I think that's not one that I've had a chance to get back to yet, so I'll look into it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty clear in code, the other, the other part, that's in the building code, our local law, uh, it's not, it's something that was grandfathered in, you, you're not allowed to have a Mole Home now any longer in the village. And after a year of being vacant, which it has been, uh, if it would be, according to our law, it would need to be made, uh, subsequent to being compliant. And it would never be compliant.
How long? Thirty, thirty-third street.
Thirty, okay.
Thirty-third street, yeah. Um, if by chance this does not require an engineering report and we can move forward, is there some way we can do a formal motion saying that we are authorizing the village to move forward with condemning and tearing down said building or something of that nature, or you wanna wait and see what?
I really don't usually get an R P or somebody a quote for taking down a building?
Yes, we normally put it out for bid, um, doing the demo work. Would they need air monitoring as well?
No.
Probably not.
No, I, I don't think that's, uh, we may have to do, we may have to do inspections, uh, for asbestos, right? You know, I would, except for small firework.
I, I.
Can we do it?
That's what I'm saying, I, I'm, I suggest that we, the village, do it.
We, do it?
Oh, is it in-house?
Is that why Kenny just left, 'cause he saw this question coming?
He, he may have. You know, I, and it's, uh, I don't, I don't think I would go out tonight with an air, just at least start the momentum.
I wanna move on this as soon as we can, so, are we on agreement, we wanna move forward with this?
If the village boards.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I wanna move in there.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah, alright.
I'd like to do some, if we can, do whatever we can do to make a motion to get this moved forward, and once we find out if we can legally do it, but this, it's really, like Mark said, you know, I'm worried about it, with winter coming, somebody's gonna try to get in there and family members are close by now, are staying close by.
Kenny, while you were gone, we signed you up for a bunch of work. Actually, uh, the question is, uh, the Mole Home on thirty-third street, um, is that something that you think the village D P W could handle taking down and carting out? I hate to be on the other side of this, I'm not, I'd rather see professionals come in and do it.
As would I, uh, if we, we could, we're not professionals, we might as well do it with bucket loads.
I mean, I'm sure that would be fun.
Yeah, we'd be blessed.
And hauling the stuff out of there.
Do it, just do it damage.
Well, you could, and do it, you can do it, you can do it in a day. Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong, you could probably do it in a day with, with a bucket load, right?
Sure, I mean, it, it wouldn't be much, I mean, I don't think, I don't think you'd have to worry about any asbestos because it's Mole Home.
Right. Well, Kenny, do me a favor, take a look at it, see if you think that's something we can handle, if it's not, I think, I mean, we all wanna move forward and get, get this out of here.
Yeah, yes.
So if we are able, if you feel comfortable, like we can do it, and it's not gonna be a risk or an injury factor, anything like that, that's fantastic. But if, if there's even a slight bit of hesitation, I'd rather err to the side of having professionals come in and take care of it, even though it's gonna be more expensive.
'Cause coming, Mark, all the garbage here, nothing's been removed, right? 'Cause remember the, the, all the garbage was taken away, so there's no junk left there.
All the garbage that was in the yard.
In the yard, right.
There's still hot water tanks and.
Sure.
Sure.
So it's a, it's a safety thing, if you guys can't think you do, you can do it safely, then you'll do it.
I'll look at it, I'll look at it, I mean, you know, I know that, no, I don't wanna get involved, you know, with like trash cleanup thing.
No, right.
You're a guy. I'm not, I'm not gonna make my guys pick up dirty needles or anything.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Agreed, hundred percent.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Alright, um. Uh, also, any questions?
Forward, forward.
Oh, Elena, if legally speaking, we need something from the owner allowing for it to happen, I don't think that would be a whole ask.
That's why we need to talk about it, if you, if you think, do you think we can offer something like a waiver or something?
Yeah. Yes. Okay.
Okay, I'll go with Mark.
We're, we're gung ho on it, so yes, it's fine.
Okay.
Um, any questions for Mark? Yes, Deb?
Um, I've been in contact with this person who lives next door to Stuart, and she has some questions about the curb. She talked to the men who worked near this morning, and they said somebody else do it, doesn't it, does the curb, don't, did they pull some curbs out? I didn't have a chance to look at it, so.
They pulled, they pulled sidewalks out, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah.
Yeah, they put sidewalks, but something about her, the, the curb near her driveway or something, the driveways get blocked off.
Deb. They may have a different subcontractor coming out and just do that specific task.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't, you know, they, they sub everything else, not, not, a lot of things are subbed off.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's all I can say, okay?
It was concrete guys who were there and figured most sidewalks.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
And I saw somebody pushing a car, on my way to this meeting, pushing a carriage, walking with another girl on that side of the road in the street, in dark spots.
You have to be thoughtful, can't fix it.
I, yeah, I agree.
Wow, alright, that's a.
The person who was questioning, was questioning the sidewalks, was standing in the Melham Road this morning, like, competing in traffic. And like stepped out in front of the bucket load, I was driving a bucket load, like I had to stop and just, you know.
But fortunately, that part of it's all, yeah, they just had to do it for.
Yeah, no, I think it'll be okay once it's all done, I think.
They are making fast.
I'm impressed with the speed which is going up, yeah, alright, anything else, Mark?
That's for sure.
I'm wondering.
Thank you.
Looking for motions to approve the code enforcer report? Thank you, Megan, need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bobby, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, poser's extensions, carries, charge report. Finance people, Denise, anything you wanna highlight?
I just wanted to add that I sent everyone an email this week, time we're not allowed for a budget tag.
I just wanted to add that I sent everyone an email this week, time we're not allowed for a budget to act well. So I will get that out to everybody in the department heads by noon tomorrow. And just the software issue that we'd like to address.
Yep.
And we have chosen paychecks.
Yeah.
Payroll questionnaire, and that should be online by January one and maybe apparel system.
And I believe she emailed me after I left work that she sent her.
I got an email about that. Is that for me to sign?
Okay. Yes.
Okay, good, good. Make sure I do that tomorrow, please.
That must be a little.
That's great.
That's, yeah, that, that, that's very good. Do you know what the timing is gonna be for when it starts and how much like overlap it's gonna be with like setting that up?
I think in December will be overlap. That's, that's, we're late, it hasn't been in there.
Okay, alright, no, that's.
I'm trying to hit January.
They're gonna do a mock payroll in December. It's fantastic.
Fantastic.
And then we'll have to be training of the employees around the time management system.
Mm-hmm.
We do need to discuss if we're gonna get a tablet or set up a central computer for everyone to clock in or how that wants to be.
How would that work with different departments?
That's what we'll figure out.
Okay, so Department heads, did you guys hear that? We're essentially doing a payroll paycheck system, so we're gonna have to have some discussions about how specifically to clock in and where to do that and logistically how that works.
I think Kenny wants to have a central.
Yeah, I would prefer that.
Right at, right at the, yeah, it's right at his office.
So I can punch my guys in.
That makes sense.
And the police department's gonna do what they do now and as you, they have to go over and to uh transfer it over into this system. I think the other staff we have to.
Jim, Josh, you think it would work to log, log in here before you go over yonder?
I mean, I could punch them in, they'd just stop and that's.
Can there be multiple like check-in stops? Like can you?
That's what we gotta figure out.
Yeah, that would make, yeah, that would make.
We also probably have a.
Aren't there ones you could do on your phone? You know, like you can.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, not available, ones you could do on your phone.
I agree with not wanting to do the phone, yeah.
Well, you have to be, if there's a proximity clause.
Yeah, right, okay, alright.
Right. Yeah, he ain't checking that clocking on your phone. He ain't doing it on, he could be a hundred within a thirty minutes. Three states away.
They're usually.
Twenty five years ago, I knew a teacher who was faxing in the I'm, I'm sick today notices.
You have to be. Just, just so you know.
Not knowing that there was a return number that showed the area code of the city he was gigging in for like a week.
Okay. Just, okay. That's a no key number, okay.
Yeah.
You get sick in other places.
Those were the good old days, man. Oh, uh here you got in trouble. Alright, any other questions for Denise? Looking for motion to approve the treasure report? Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Deb. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poser's intentions? Kerry's, clerk, deputy clerk report?
Nothing else to report.
It's fantastic.
Right for the letter.
Yeah, the letter.
Yes, sorry about that in advance. Um.
I'm super excited.
One thing I do wanna put on the radar is we were originally looking at doing the upgrades to the municipal buildings, main lobby, bathroom. And and we have a plan for the front desk. We need to plan timing for that and the likelihood of using hopefully three M settlement funds for that little project. So I just wanna put that back on the radar for when do we want and see if we can get that set up to redo the window area in a way that you guys have set up with uh John Cooney. Cause we still have those plans. Just a matter of getting updated quote, bringing it to the board and moving forward with that. Fantastic. Alright, looking for motion to approve the clerk, deputy clerk report?
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Megan, and everyone else. All in favor?
Can I add one, I'm sorry, can I add one more thing that I should have brought this up? There is, and I don't know if the lines are ahead.
Oh yeah.
Forget it, that's okay.
Okay, go back to it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poser's intentions? Kerry's, highway report. Bobby, Kenny, anything you wanna highlight?
Um not really. I mean, you got all her papers up though. They really came out pretty good.
Picking up leaves till the twenty seventh, right Kenny?
December second.
Yeah, December second.
Oh, December second.
Leaf pickup is going very well, by the way.
Yeah, I don't.
December.
Yes, it is.
Um Kenny, I don't know how you guys move, the speed that you do with leaf pickup, but it's, it's pretty impressive and I have heard like nay a single complaint. About it, so you guys are doing great.
The guys are hustling, they're doing, yeah, every day we're out there. We've got, we've got over eighty loads of leaves already this year from the village.
Yeah, it's on the website, it's through December second.
Yeah, okay.
So it is there. Great.
I don't mind that. So the, the weather, those are definitely, it's just so, it's right up there. Well, cause I'm, it's flying.
Sorry.
They're gonna pick up frozen snowy leaves.
That's true. I'm looking for motion to approve the highway department report? Thank you, Bobby seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poser's intentions? Kerry, sewer report. Kenny?
Same thing, everything's falling.
That's good. That's good.
We just, we, you know, we, we're still, um because of the weather, we're still getting hit heavy with the waste dollars, which is nice for an extra money.
Did we get that thing replaced that had gone down at like?
We did, and I haven't gotten a bill for it.
Don't ask, that's fine. Totally fine. Totally fine with that.
I'm not sure. I was going with different prices and then when the guy finally came out and doing a couple of day and a half.
Five dollars, that's what I think.
That would be great, but.
Alright, yeah.
Times nineteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, we're ten thousand dollars over what we collected last year.
Yes, yeah.
This time. So unfortunately, I do need to replace another one of those drives. I mean, it's not, it hasn't gone down yet. But yeah. So the um, the, the drives are one of our blowers and right now I'm running on two blowers.
Yep.
And optimally, we'd like to run three. We're still making permit, you know, we're not, we're not in violation with the two. But eventually, you know, all these blowers and and everything at the sewer plant is, is, you know, fifteen, sixteen years old. And it's just starting to deteriorate. It's all electrical, you know, it doesn't last forever. So, you know, in the near future, we're gonna need to make some, some upgrades.
I mean, those are original, what, two thousand four, two thousand five?
Two thousand five, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, twenty years, not a, not surprised. Okay. Anything else for Kenny?
Twenty years.
Looking for motion to approve the sewer report?
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby, second Deb. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poser's intentions? Kerry's, water department report? Josh, anything else you wanna highlight?
Not particularly. I wrote it, I know what's in there.
Josh, any abandoned buildings you want to help take down?
Oh, I didn't even say.
Alright, so we already talked about the uh LSLI, that's fine. Um do you guys have any questions for Josh? Um I know that Delaware Engineering is working on the bid specs and bidding out for the dehumidification system. We actually had a motion uh for later in new business that would simply, we already approved it. We wanna tie it to ARPA funds that we still have, so that we can put the money out there. We never, when we approved it, we knew it was an important thing, we had to move on immediately. We never specifically said where, how the funds come from, so that is there to discuss. Kenny?
I want to bring up excavator.
Oh, yes. Excavator.
Doesn't sound good, I think we shouldn't talk about it. Yeah.
So I've reached out to multiple people. I can't get anybody to come in and, you know, kind of give me a bid on what it's worth.
Alright.
Um we, we purchased it in two thousand seventeen.
No, was it two thousand seventeen?
And I paid a hundred and ten thousand for it.
Right after the flood.
We've put approximately a thousand hours on it. I, I think we should put it out to bid, maybe starting at like ninety thousand dollars. I don't, I don't. You know, I, I, capital's there, they're, they're certainly interested. They, they wanna, they wanna.
We were trying to get people to come in and do the bidding.
They, they want me to trade it in on, on a piece of equipment they have, or they don't have any dollars left, so.
And that's what we do. Do we need a motion to approve putting it out for bid or do we need to do it?
When you said put out for bid, you mean auction? Not to auction, auction. I thought that that's what we already did.
We were trying to bring in a service to come, we got, we approved.
We were trying to get somebody to give us a value on it.
The service, but the, the only service it wants to do wants only helping trade.
Yeah, we did a motion to put it out to auction with the idea that we get a company to come in and help them, but we've already, but we've already authorized it.
Right, and we haven't had one. Okay, so we can just.
But I don't know, that's the name I was referring for, Auction International. That's a good, pretty good.
Kenny, Lena's got another uh company we'll try before we do this.
I don't know who you contacted, but Auction International's.
Yes, you gave me their number.
Okay, you do have that.
What'd they say?
They said that they were, sometime, finding time to come out and, and look at it and give me a price and they never having reached back out to them.
Okay.
There was one, one other company too that I reached out to, and of course capital tractors.
Yep.
And they're interested in it, so they don't wanna pay us any for it. They want us to trade it in on something else.
We already authorized, so. Do it, Bobby's your contact, alright. And Josh will help out.
Okay. Yeah.
I'm just kidding. Alright, we never approved the water department report, some motion to, um do we have a motion to approve it? Need a motion to approve the water department report. Thank you, Deb. Thank you, Megan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poser's intentions? Alright, Kerry's, I think that finishes off the report, so uh thank you. Zipping. Um so we had some discussions about the October ninth regular meeting uh minutes. Um we have them made. We had some early discussions, but I don't think we ever resolved the, the questions we were talking about regarding the minutes of that meeting. So Olivia's thought was.
I'm just speaking at a turn a little bit, but if, if the, if the meetings are audio recorded and posted, you don't need to do minutes.
No, please.
That's what I thought.
Really?
Yeah.
That's what Nikon will be.
Look at her, boy, oh boy, and this is my like that.
Yeah, but we should have some right minutes.
Nikon did tell me that.
Really?
Yeah.
That makes me feel wrong to move away from written minutes.
The important is right though.
Somebody's out listening to a three hour meeting and having, we should have some.
Yeah.
We're watching what others.
Well, I just like.
Their record of what was said than what was said.
I know, but like having the text based record to quickly search and have archive, like I would.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's fine doing, but I'm just saying for like how.
Yeah. Detailed conversations and such.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, your minutes are, are very precise and are very accurate.
There's no hearsay.
I mean, I, I understand what you're saying.
It's about the facts.
Or, yeah, I mean, a lot of times you'll see the minutes would reflect like resolution, whatever, you know.
Yeah.
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 Who it was ordered by, so it's, yeah, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Um and maybe even a record of who spoke and privilege of the, well, you guys.
That the people we heard, yeah.
People living here. Um but usually it's a lot more basic. And that, it's more of a record keeping, easy look up than getting into details.
Right, and you still.
I'm just, I'm not saying that that's what you have to do. I just did it on the record.
No, no, well, we have the recording as a backup, but as far as Olivia summarizing the meeting for us, I have no problem with that.
That sounds good.
As long as we get the, we went on.
Yeah, I know neither. I think it's good, it's good for transparency and it gives residents the feeling of what, not just what you told me.
I like it.
Sure.
Right.
Right.
So do we wanna take one more look at the minutes or are we good with how many as they are?
I was fine with them as they can.
Yeah.
Okay, in that case.
I'll make a motion and present them as presented, uh accept them as presented.
All those words, thank you. Doug, alright, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poser's intentions? Kerry's, alright. Uh trustee committee reports. We'll go alphabetically, alter.
I'm not, I'm not. I'm the alphabet.
Why don't you go with the bucket of garbage?
That's.
That's true.
Um, I got, I mean, we already talked about the Stewart's, so, and I had something else written down, but it's on my desk.
What's that?
I had some, I, we already talked about the Stewart's. I had something else that was on my desk at work, but.
That's.
It's on my desk at work.
Does that mean you're done?
Hmm.
Well done. Fred Handsman, not to exceed her time. Go for it. I'm just kidding. Nothing. Awesome. Trustee sour.
That's amazing. Um, uh the transfer station, uh Denise, Kenny and Keith and I had a reproductive meeting looking at the, the rates and the issues affecting the transfer station.
Yes.
Of which, uh I think there's a general feeling we're losing money on that unnecessarily.
For years.
Uh the majority of. The trash and garbage is from the town, not the.
Contributors, yeah.
The fees have not been raised in fifteen, twenty years maybe.
Mm-hmm.
Um so we're gonna be coming, we're, we're meeting with the authority, just trying to set up a meeting with the authority, because we have to get some facts there. Uh some information and we're gonna come in and act and, and revising prices.
Good.
Um and, and. There's different issues, like stickers and not having to have people's stickers on cars or maybe there's discounts for a second or third car or like.
Sure.
A good. System for, yeah, maintaining records, easy way.
And we also talked about the, for scale. And part of that depends on how we handle some of the stuff with the authority and the town. So hopefully at the next meeting, we will have a more, it'll probably be in two stages, uh what we need to do effective for January and then um.
Next season.
How we might handle some of the bigger items coming here. A lot of this depends on our discussion, the scale.
But the scale. Scale can be very costly.
And, and also our relationship with the authority.
Right.
I, I will say that in just my time as mayor, the market for and costs associated with garbage disposal. It just blew up. It, I, it's, it's just insane. It's gotta be probably twice of what it was when I started like seven and a half years ago.
And it's not just garbage, it's, it's the construction and demolition.
Yeah.
And recycling, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
And where is that coming from? Is it really coming from the village or is it coming from Vermont?
Yep. Yep.
A good example that you raised was mattresses. People are getting paid seventy dollars to take mattresses away and they, case they don't, they pay us ten.
Yeah.
And we get charge tons, we're making nothing.
Yeah, it's an important service, but we are way behind on getting caught up with where the costs are.
We're handling.
So, alright, thank you for taking that on.
Um.
I don't wanna tell you what number trustee you'll be taking that on, but that's, that's fine.
Uh something else, uh a resident approached me about the, the lights being out in the village.
Another more thing. Yeah, me too.
I asked Sergeant Hudson, he, the, the police department has gone through an inventory.
Ooh.
Um and he has tried to report it to NIMO, but NIMO's portal isn't down.
National, National Grid's portal. Oh, I tried to enter all the stuff. I called them and they said, yeah, we know the portal's not working, sorry.
It hasn't been working for months.
Try back, try back Monday and talk to a manager.
Bobby, didn't you, didn't you reach out to, didn't you give us someone?
Yeah, I, I, I called, I called National Grid for, about a street light on First Street and it was on that night. I called them the, that afternoon, it was on that night.
Okay, can you call them? I'll get them.
Seriously?
I mean, that's, right on live, yeah, I mean.
We called the same, about the same light multiple times and the person.
The resident, the resident who complained about it and she.
Yeah.
All those in favor of?
They stated it wasn't, wasn't their pole, was their pole, but not their light. We had to fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, I, and all those people in favor of making Bobby the, the National Grid.
No.
The National Grid worker over here?
Yeah.
The National Grid. I, I, I'm in favor of getting rid of National Grid altogether. We're, we're in the process of trying.
Well, we're, we're in the process of doing that, so eventually we'll be switching our street, streetlights will have a lot more control and we'll have to be waiting for.
Oh, you know, uh, yeah.
Remember when that tree, the pole came down in my yard last winter?
I do recall that.
But I guess, I guess River Street is particularly serious.
Yeah.
There's a number of lights there, so it's getting bad.
Yes.
It's funny, Doug, on the way here, I come, the, the three poles from, from McCaffrey Street to, to turning down to Fist Street. There was three, three lights out.
So we need to follow up on that.
Consecutive.
And the one right outside Madison Street where kids wait for those.
And Olivia calls all the time. When she gets the pole numbers, she calls them in all the time.
Yeah. Yeah.
She gave me the number, I called and I got some guy and he said, I'll see what I can do. And that day was on, but you know.
I, I want that number. Anything else, Doc?
Lastly, we, you know, the employees have gone through the sexual harassment training program, we need to board numbers that haven't already done it to, to do it, uh send you the.
I need to send my certificate, but I'll still probably do it anyway, just to have the experience of doing it.
Yeah, yeah, and that, the record has to be on, you know.
Yeah, thank you. Please keep talking. Awesome. Anything else?
Nope.
Fantastic, thank you. Trustee sour?
Uh well, I wanna talk about the lead service lines, but that's already out of the way, so.
Yes. Can, um you and I talk maybe tomorrow about putting a post online, where you can so people understand what this is coming for.
I did that already.
You have, you have, you, you did that, it's helpful.
Because I just wanted to prove, like sort of preemptively, people, when they get that notice that part of their stuff may be lead, that just means that we don't know.
Preemptive. Yep. Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't mean you're drinking from a, a Roman chalice of lead and wine, you know.
Yep. Yeah. Alright, alright, uh anything else, Dan?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Walter?
Um same with the lead service line initiative, that was definitely important. Um and would you, the dehumidification unit, I know I said that word way too many times. I'm so glad that's finally gonna be going out to bid.
I've been referred to as a humidification system and people like, why would you wanna do that?
Humidification. And it's not ballast tank, the ballast tank is going in December first to the thirty first.
Yes, apparently the roof of the GAC building is gonna be open for a month during December.
Yeah.
So, when?
December.
To replace the, the tank. I'm sure that will go fine.
It won't snow during that at all.
Engineers. Alright. Okay, thank you, Megan. Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Uh the only thing I have in regards to the streetlights, the RTE.
Yes.
Um I, in talking with National Grid, um they confirmed that all of our documentation is in order. We have, uh, there's, they're telling me that we have, it'll be May or June of twenty twenty five before they start, before it's finalized. They have a hundred and twenty days to finalize the, after, we signed the agreement on October first, they have a hundred and twenty days. And then they're, they, they told me an email anticipate late, late uh May, early June before it'll be finalized, before real term can start their project. And they can do the ones on the poles we own. But, and that's the other thing to get with you, Rob. Um they sent a map, um and they wanna make sure that the poles that we want them to work on.
Yes.
They need, they want proof of, ma- make sure to confirm we own them, not, they're not National Grid owned, because they don't want the, the actual, let's we contract to work on National Grid poles.
Okay.
So it's, it's coming, it's coming slow, but it's coming.
Alright.
Trying.
If, if, if the streetlight program takes longer than a new water source, I'm gonna kinda lose my mind, but.
Shit. It's been, it's, it's been two years, surprise.
Also, also National Grid.
Yeah, nah.
Alright, um at this point, we normally allow students, if they want to have their papers signed off and go, we're actually at the two hour mark, so a little bit later than normal. Feel free to come to any of us. We will gladly sign your papers. Uh you're welcome to stay for the rest of the riveting meeting.
Can I sign? Do I sign, sign or not?
I mean, I don't see why not. Go for it, Olivia. I mean, I don't see why not, go for it, Olivia, is that, whatever are you pen? Oh, good notes. Uh, yeah.
I don't want that to go back to my house, I don't want you to know.
All the things that went wrong, you know, it's fault. Well, that's nice, pen, I was like, it's a great pen, tell me online, bye guys. Yes, yes. You can mute your side of it, right, so you can hear, okay. Actually, have a leave your phone in, in your way.
Is it sneaking away?
New business.
Obviously, welcome to stay, but if you need to know anything, we'll say, great to see you, great to see you. Was that for over an hour, or did he even have a chief, former chief coordinator?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, Tim, chief coordinator, yeah.
The one.
The one that wrote that report?
No, the one I got, that submitted too.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. I made eye contact with him like four times, didn't connect.
You know, I had Facebook information from the other side of that incident. But that, that says he was handling that situation, those costs on a process.
I also have that.
I mean, I'm not, I'm just gonna, it's like, yeah, it is what it is.
Alright, well, we're just starting that off. Alright, let's keep going, we got more to go. We gotta zip to the last few things. We are resuming. Stop that friendliness stuff, come on, chop chop.
Sorry.
Just kidding, just kidding. So just as a reminder, Elena's on her way, she's on speakerphone here. Um, she's muted on her side, but if we have questions for Elena, she's listening. And I'm sure it's a riveting drive home with our communications there. Okay, um, old business, I have two items that nothing really has happened with yet, but I don't wanna lose track of them. The first one, I feel like we talked about last time, but nothing specifically moved forward, it was about changing the costs associated with foil policy and the property search fee, have we had any new developments or thoughts on that? This is just one I wanna keep on the radar and maybe try to get a resolution set up for December.
Yeah.
It's a low priority with some of the other larger priorities we have, but I still wanna see it.
But it is a priority.
Scale was on that, right?
What's that?
The scale was on that list?
Uh, what, you mean the capital projects list? I think so. Um, I figure probably next meeting, that will be a big discussion, so I'm kind of hoping or expecting that we'll have that money in at that time. Um, but I just wanted to keep this on, so unless anybody has anything they wanna discuss or add about this, I'm ready to move on to new business?
Yeah, I'm just, for the foil policy, and what are we gonna do between now and the next meeting to get that in place?
That's, that's my question, I, Elena, do you remember us talking about foil policy and property search fee stuff?
I I recall beginning the discussion, yes.
On email.
And I know I sent out the question and answers about that.
Can you get like maybe, um, a a starting point resolution that we can circulate and then sort of talk more in detail about?
And I'd be willing to play a lead on this pretty well together.
That would be great, Doug, Doug said he'll be, uh, very happy to take lead on that with you.
Well, so on the foil search, I don't know that you, I mean, I'll look into it, I don't know if you necessarily need a resolution, because the fees are already prescribed by law. But on the property search, those are different, and you just do a resolution and set the fee.
So we can't change foil fees?
I don't think we're doing what we're allowed to do.
We can't change what's prescribed, yeah, that's set forth in the law already, so we can't change that part of it, we can implement it, as the village isn't currently doing that, which a lot of people, places don't charge, but you can start charging based on that law.
That's.
And then the property search fees, I think there is already one in place, if I remember correctly, but it's really low.
It's really low, right?
So we need to adjust it.
Okay, yeah, bless you, yeah, uh, would love to have you and Doug work on something for next meeting on that.
Okay.
Just, just so you know, we've been doing two different ones. So, because when it comes to code department, I charge thirty three hours for a code search.
Really?
Ten, yes, and.
Someone comes out, we charge ten.
I think the solution mark is that you had a foil as well, I don't, just throwing it out there.
I know, you can have it.
Well, what Olivia's talking about is the tax search.
That's that's up by law, just.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe the tax search and the code search should be, is it, I don't know what the workload is.
I mean, it definitely should be more than that.
We need to look at what you do as well, and make sure we do it consistently, and everybody has the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yep. Yep. Alright, Doug, thank you for taking that on.
Am I correct in saying that you can't charge for foil under two hours?
I don't know of that restriction, Elena, did you hear that question?
I did, I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Like, for some reason, I thought I read it half.
It has to be over.
You do, you you think it has to be over two hours?
I'm sorry, Doug.
Okay. That's interesting, I never, I never.
It is, 'cause like, I mean, I know it's not the same, but like, banking can charge you for any search that day required.
Yeah.
I know, I tell you, you guys, title search, my move.
For a title search, yeah, right.
Yeah. Well, we'll make sure when we work on the implementing language, we include that, if that's what it is, if there's a minimum of two hours that you have to hit.
It it it's interesting, because you could ask for one piece of paper, or you could ask for a thousand pieces of paper.
Yes.
So it's.
Yes. Well, I think, I mean, especially for some of the bigger, heftier things, I think we should put a form together that jogs down all the time and spend on it, so we can tie that back to however the charging works if that factors into it. Some of them can be exceptionally time consuming. Yes. But again, state law, we're we're limited on what we can charge and for why, so.
Right.
Alright, anything else, old business wise wanna discuss, or move on?
I just would like to make a, just a note to the settlement, it's that, but this is the.
Yes, please. Yes, the three, that's the three M capital projects out of money.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about some outstanding invoices that we still have from the companies that are sitting on the books along, as well as the old water and sewer receivables.
Speaking to that, um.
And we should wash it.
The last.
Well, some of that revenue could be used to offset some of that stuff.
Yes, that's, that's a good point, maybe we sit together and figure that out, and sort of put some recommendations to the board. Talk about, um, things that never quite got taken care of, and maybe use the money for that to balance it out, there's a lot of discussions we should have with that. That's a good point. Alright, moving on to new business, uh, we discussed that, uh, the senior exemption language, so that's done. Um, this is just something we wanted to throw out there, because we had, this is the engineering cost for the dehumidification system, as opposed to the humidification system, which I used to call it. Um, we had already approved a maximum of fifteen hundred, or fifteen thousand five hundred on this. We just want to consider using ARPA funds, of which we have twenty nine thousand left before this.
I guess twenty and three.
Ah, I thought I had that off the top of my head, uh, let me find it.
Denise has it off the top of her head.
Yeah, of course she does, the numbers are over there.
Okay.
Um, so anyway, we have the money for it, we thought it would be, it was a sensible thing to do, so. Uh, and Elena said we could just, uh, do it through motion, so are we good with that approach?
That's the last of the RPA money, right?
Yep. No, it's a little bit more.
Okay, 'cause I'm, I was on a call today, and the anticipation is that come February first, any unspent in unencumbered ARPA money is gonna be grabbed right back.
We should prioritize that then.
I'm sure that we can find some words.
I'm sure we can find something.
With a thousand an hour.
Yeah.
Fourth work, something.
Maybe a software system.
Yep.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, oh, you said that calling software, yeah.
No.
Yeah. I bet, I think this is a shared recognition.
Yep. Alright, so, um, looking for a motion to approve the use of ARPA funds to pay for the previously approved engineering work for the dehumidification system, at a max of fifteen thousand five hundred.
I'm a little.
Thank you, Doug, Brett, you want a second?
Sure.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions? Carries, fantastic, motion, done. Uh, we did the proposed local law already, that approved, so that's done. Uh, we have the thirteenth resolution that handles all of the escrow, uh, accounts for our engineering, lucky number thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let me find it, um, it's the same resolutions as in the past. Uh, highlights the costs being covered by the company for our engineer and our legal services, as they relate to the installation of the new water infrastructure, so we don't have to pay for it. It was originally eighty thousand, they put an additional twenty thousand, the current bills are thirteen hundred eighty for legal services and sixteen thirty three fifty for environmental engineering services, therefore, now that it will be resolved, um, to authorize, uh, payments, as I've said before, and that's all we have said. Alright, who would like to offer this resolution, thank you Brett? He can, now, who would like to second it? Thank you, Dan, any further discussion? Uh, oh, uh, yeah, second offer, alright, yeah, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Sauer. Trustee Alrey. No, trustee Walery, trustee Shuttin.
Yes.
Trustee Hanson.
Yes.
Trustee Mayor, I Ryan.
Here.
And Mayor Robin.
Uh, yes, can you make sure to email the approved thing to Angela?
Yeah.
Wow, fantastic, thank you. Uh, revenue anticipation note, uh, we are a little bit low on balance right now, so we know CHIPS funding is coming in the way of one hundred twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty five, can you confirm that we're done with CHIPS for the season? Uh, so, so we have a resolution from our bond council somewhere on my screen here, that we are asking to move forward with a, uh, revenue anticipation note, I think you guys do have a hard copy of this? As soon as I find it. There it is.
It's to pay the pack on the down, that's in the pile of files.
Oh.
So.
I'm gonna scroll down a bit to the actual resolution page. Yes. Um, so this is the resolution delegating the village treasurer to, uh, the power to authorize sale initiatives of not to exceed one hundred twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty five. Yeah. Revenue anticipation notes, uh, we've done these a bunch of times, um, I've highlighted all the stuff I need to highlights. Does anyone have any specific thoughts, questions, discussion? It's not listed there, but I'd like someone to offer and second the resolution, so Brett would like to offer it, and Bobby will second it, further discussion?
Second.
Hearing none, do you have anything you wanna, okay, uh, roll call vote?
Trustee Sauer.
Yes.
Trustee Alrey. Yes. Trustee Walery. Yep. Trustee Shuttin.
Yes.
Trustee Hanson.
Yes.
Trustee Mayor, I Ryan.
Yes.
And Mayor Al.
Uh, yes, when you fill that out, you're gonna have to add the offering in the second resolution, the fact that we have seven, not five.
Yep. It it's in here.
Oh, okay, I just didn't find it, thank you, yes, Ken.
I would just like to extend my thanks to the town of Music, who helped us immensely with the paving. Um, they used their trucks, which saved us fuel, fuel cost, um, trucking fees. Um, they, you know, they they've been extremely helpful in the last year.
That's fantastic.
Working with us and helping us out and saving us, I think, so.
I think one of the the best well cup secrets is village, town, and school, shared services, projects, equipment throughout. One of the coolest partnerships, very few people know about it, but the people involved will know how valuable it is, so, thank you, Ken for bringing that up.
You could put that on the news or website, so people can read about it.
Good. Although in this moment, I'm not a school person, I'm just noting that, as someone who has been involved with helping, said school, alright, I'm gonna stop talking.
Right, you're wrong, yeah.
Um, we have already discussed the resolution for planning and zoning board meeting pay, we're gonna review that and come back next meeting. Uh, we have a village election coming up in March of twenty twenty five, so as per our, um, NICOM calendar, we need to have a motion that would allow the village clerk to publish a notice designating the offices to be filled and the terms thereof for the following seats. Mayor's a two-year term and three trustee seats procedure, need someone to offer the res, uh, motion.
I had to tell what makes a motion.
Uh, typically in situations like, typically in situations like that, it's it's kinda like a, you should have, but it 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 doesn't get, uh, messed up, so.
I'll make a motion.
Bobby made it, Deb did you want a second it? Alright, further discussion?
Who's the, who's seat up?
Mine, huh, mayor.
Um.
Yours.
I got it, I got it.
And Megan.
Do I?
Isn't it you, Bobby, Devon, Doug?
Yes. Doug, yes.
Doug? And who was the fourth?
Megan, isn't it her one year?
Hey, Lisa, you were on a, you're on a weird journey.
No, you, well, 'cause you fill the vacancy, you fill the vacancy.
So you're up for a two-year term.
I'm up for it.
No, you're, you're finishing.
No, that's not, it's Meg, Doug, and Bobby.
I have another year to go.
You have another year to go. Bobby Decker.
Yeah, no, Bobby.
Right, CD.
Yeah, it was Bobby.
That's right, okay, now makes sense.
Cause I was like, bye-bye, and then I stepped off, and I said bye-bye.
The amount of time we have spent trying to figure out when we appoint a new person, oh my gosh, I still don't know it, anyway.
Yes.
So it's done?
So we have the motion, we have, uh, who seconded the motion, Deb did, I think, all in favor?
Megan in my cell and Rob.
Devon, Devon. I.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions? Carries, alright, thank you.
Lisa, Meg?
Yeah.
Uh, trustees, anything else in regular session? Okay, in that case, we have, uh, actually a fair amount of executive session, so I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Public Offices Law Section one oh five subsection DNF to discuss proposed current and pending litigation and potential future hiring decisions with no business to be connected at the end of executive session. Mouthful. Thank you Bobby, or, I spread your bread, Bobby seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed or abstentions? Alright, carries, we're moving into executive session at eight thirteen PM.